At 6:30, welcome everybody to the meeting. We'll begin the agenda with call to order and the pledge of allegiance. If you please stand, the flag is in the back of the room.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Each of the board members have a copy of the agenda in front of them. You know, entertain a motion for approval of the agenda unless there's any...
I'd like to make a couple of changes.
Mary?
Under topics for action, 9B, youth options, we'd like to move that into consent items, so it would be 9A4.
Okay.
And then we'd like to remove item under committee reports 10C, that committee meeting was rescheduled.
Okay. Any other comments or changes? Does everybody understand the proposed changes to the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda with the two changes moving 9B to the consent item and make it 9A4 and elimination of 10C.
We have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Tom. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motions approved. Thank you. We'll move on to item number four, the student staff community recognition, and we'll start with our fall athletics.
We have one group with us this evening. We have two others that I'd like to at least mention. We did have our boys golf team did make it to state and then our soccer team, our boys soccer did as well. They unfortunately have their soccer banquet this evening, but Mr. Mancini, Coach Mancini did email me just to give us a little rundown of this season. They were the La Salle Warrior Invitational Champions, the Cardinal Classic Runner-Up, the Big Rivers Conference Runner-Up with a record of eight, three, and one, and back-to-back sectional champions. They lost to the state finalist Milwaukee Marquette in the state quarterfinals, zero to one, and allowed .96 goals against per game with 12 shutouts. And Mackenzie Lund tied the school record for assists with 17, and Nick Lund led the team in goals with 15 and points with 38. And it just ends with overall record of 18, nine, and one. I think, Mary, you were at the game. They did a fine show at the state tournament.
Wasn't at that one, but they did a great job throughout the season.
Congratulations.
And we do have with us this evening, Coach Pupa is here with members of the cross-country team. We'll let him give a little overview of the cross-country season, please.
All right, we had a great season this year. We had two girls make it to state as individuals. Our team was just shy of getting there. Katie Cummings was at state four years, so that was something that hasn't been done in the history of Hudson High School. And she placed 13th this year. Clarissa Frazee for the first time, sitting right here. She made it to state as an individual and placed 50th. And for the boys team, we had Neil Kivvy, Adam Zeiss about here today, Luke Westervard, John Roberts just came in, Dan Schlescher, and Carson Paul. And the seniors, John Roberts, Neil Kivvy, and Adam Zeiss made it to state as a team three years in a row, and this was the first for Hudson High School. And they placed seventh this year. They were 13th last year and ninth was the year before. So those three did an excellent job of all three years and finished off their careers in very, very great style. We were also, for the boys, were also conference champs three years in a row now and sectional champs. So that was another first for us. The girls were, this was their second year for conference championships. And so we're losing those three and, well, four really, and Katie Cummings to graduation. So it's going to be interesting to see what our team will respond with.
Don, I thought you retired.
I thought you retired.
Well, retired for teaching, but...
It's great.
Good to see you.
Good to see you.
Congratulations, student athletes. Any others?
No.
That was it? Okay.
For the athletics, want me to just kind of keep going down?
Yeah, just again, congratulations to our student athletes in all those different sports, women's golf, soccer, boys, cross-country, boys, girls. Really a very good showing, and thanks for your hard effort and work. Congratulations.
Thank you. I do. Thank you. The musical, I think last Friday, the Turnahoyes, the Bowen Egbrotons and the Cobaches were in attendance last Friday and enjoyed the musical. Unfortunately, because they've been putting in pretty much two and a half months' worth of time, they were set to come this evening but don't have rehearsal, and so asked, because they're focused on kind of recuperating and pretty caught up with homework. So anyway, I would like to remind the community that there is another weekend of performances. We have Friday, November 16th, Saturday, the 17th, and Sunday, the 18th at 2:00 p.m. The evening performances are at 7:00, but it's an outstanding production, absolutely outstanding.
Very, it's, as Sandy pointed out, I was there on Friday, and it's just an excellent performance. And the neat thing about it is it involves so many kids, I mean, at all the different grade levels, which is sort of fun, so highly recommend it.
Then we have our munchkin mom sitting right here.
Oh.
So when they're not on stage, Peg's job is to keep them busy and happy, so.
Forty-two middle schoolers.
Bless you.
I thought there were fifth graders there.
Yeah, there are.
It was fun.
Middle school wannabes.
Yep. And I had special thanks to the directors, Ms. Heisler and Mr. Hayes, did a very good job with it.
And they knew this production was going to be, you know, it's a large production business, and so they actually had auditions last spring so they could start rehearsals right away in the fall and not lose any time, so.
It's a big commitment.
They had a busy fall. All right, next, we're recognition. Our own Adam Cowles, football coach, high school football coach, was recognized by the University of Saskatchewan Falls and has been put in the Athletic Hall of Fame at Udonla College. And is present...
Yep. Yeah, it's an honor, you know, it's a tribute to, you know, just playing with a lot of good players and great coaches and just good teams at that time. It's really, it's really a tribute to all the guys I played with. You know, they pick the Hall of Fame every couple of years, and I'm just fortunate enough to be in the right place at the right time.
Great teams, played on some good teams, and, you know, play as a team, and we're good players, just very excited about that, excited about who's...
Or does part of recognizing that, you know, it's very...
Great, like...
Adam, you're a model for your players. You gave everybody else credit, so it's about a team.
And then Chris Daleyall, why don't you say it, Chris? Chris had quite an exciting experience this summer. He was one of a few selected to attend the Space Academy for Educators this past July, and he wrote an education foundation grant to attend, so we also want to credit our foundation with their support. But I'll let Chris kind of share a little bit about the camp and his experience.
The camp was in Huntsville, Alabama. It was a week long, and it was very intensive. Our day started at 7:00 a.m. and didn't end until 8:30 p.m. And so it was classroom activities and things that we could bring back to class, everything from astrophysics, math, science, and literature, all kinds of stuff. And we did some DNA extractions and collected meteorites. And while I was there, I won the Write Stuff Award. There's over 90 teachers, all from all across the country, and we choose somebody out of every group, and I was the one they got credit for.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
The Write Stuff Award, according to them, they said that they give it to somebody who's enthusiastic and who they can see helping others, not just themselves, and that is going to bring the curriculum back to their classroom and go next year.
Thank you. Congratulations, Chris. Okay, anything else, Sandy? Is that pretty much okay? We'll move on to item number five of the agenda, approval of the October 9th, 2007 regular enclosed session Board of Education meeting and October 30th, 2007 special board meeting minutes. So those minutes are before you for approval. Entertain a motion for approval of minutes.
Mr. President, I'd like to move to approve the October 9th regular enclosed session board meeting minutes and the October 30th special board meeting minutes.
Do we have a motion?
A second.
We have a second. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motions approved. We'll move on to item number six, the correspondence, and I believe we do have some correspondence on page eight and nine.
Several pieces. A thank you from Diane Franklin, Associate Principal at the Middle School, for flowers after surgery, and an apology from one of the students who was involved in the vandalism last spring. And then also a letter from Amy Hamburg, who is the principal at EP Rock Elementary regarding the fire, and I've been asked to read that. "To the Hudson Board of Education, Superintendent Mary Bowen Egbroton, Tracy Habashaline, and other administrators, I want to express my sincere appreciation to all of you for the support during the fire cleanup process at EP Rock. As you know, students return to school on Monday, November 5th, and as of tomorrow, Wednesday morning, the entire building is open and fully functional. Staff and students were delighted to return to normal learning activities. Thanks again for everything, Amy Hamburg and the EP Rock staff."
All right, thank you. We'll move on to the superintendent's report. Mary?
Education foundation grants were just awarded. We're very fortunate to again have 10 district grants that were approved by the foundation for a total of $25,763 that came to Hudson educators. So really appreciate the educators who wrote those grants and certainly thank the education foundation for their efforts to support our work. The trustees changed the deadlines for the grants this year, and they will, they have awarded them four times a year, and they, from now on, will be awarding them November 1st, as they just did, and then in April. So it'll be twice a year. Moving on to Rivercrest, just to give you some information about where we are, I refer to the green sheet that you have in front of you that identifies six areas of the building, A through F. A being the cafeteria, kitchen, and receiving; B, the computer lab, media center, and gymnasium; C, the offices, early childhood and kindergarten wing; and then D, E, and F are the classroom wings. So as I tell you where we are today, some of the construction updates, the steel roof support structures for sections A, D, and E are scheduled to arrive tomorrow. That's a significant milestone for us, and they're looking forward to that. The gym roof structure will be arriving next week. The masons are laying block. If you've been out there to the site, you've been seeing it continue to progress, and they have completed the gym and sections A and D, and those areas are ready for the roof structures. The, we have our first floor that was poured in the mezzanine, a mezzanine, which is for the mechanical room, and that's on a second floor even though it's a one-floor building, so it's up above, and then the floor below that. So we had our first floors because of the good weather today, so that was great. The permanent gas services are now at the site, and permanent electrical services are scheduled to be there next week. We've been making very good progress. The bearing walls are completed in F and in C, and they're kind of moving around the building in a clockwise manner. The underground plumbing is now complete in areas D, E, and F, so all the classroom areas, and C was going in today. The seating of the prairie grass, again, if you've been out there, you've seen the contour of the land, that, those are dry basins, really catch the runoff from the building and the parking lots and so forth, and those have been completed except for one small section that was too wet to plant. The trail is in, and if you have the opportunity, you should take a look at that trail. It goes through the woods, it winds through the woods, it is not a flat trail, it is a contoured trail, and I think it's really going to be a very wonderful asset for our community. Now, it is in in gravel at the present time. We hope to asphalt that trail in the spring or at some time in the future, near future, but, so that more, more people could use it in various forms of recreation. But that's an alternate bid, so we'll make that decision later. We are now on time and continue to be on budget, so we're moving forward. The weather has been great for us. Things will start to slow down. We'll have a little hunting next week that they'll hit us in Thanksgiving break as well. And then when it gets colder, they will have to really enclose the masonry and brick structure, and that'll be slower because they have to heat that as they move forward. So that'll take some more time, and we won't be making such good progress. But we've been very fortunate with the weather. We've only missed about two days of, because of rain or wind. And if you have any questions, Tim or I or Dick would be happy to answer.
Was it ever the intention of the schedule to be completely enclosed for the winter, or was that, you said we're on schedule right now, but...
Because of the size of the project, there was no way that we could be, Tom.
So it's in our budget then to heat?
Absolutely. That's part of, that was part of the RFPs.
Okay. Any other questions for Mary?
All right, moving on to the Rivercrest logo and display boards. I'd like to call your attention just to this display board that we have created to really show the Rivercrest, the front of elevation of the building, and then also the layout of the building. We will have these display boards, one at each of our schools and at the district office of the Administrative Service Center, and so it'll be in our lobby or in the front area so that people can view that and learn more about the building. We also have been working on a logo for Rivercrest, and I'm going to refer you to a piece of paper that's in front of you. We do have a display board, but unfortunately, the colors on the display board are not quite true. And the logo that you have in front of you is true to color, and I'm going to talk a little bit about those colors because they're colors that are involved or in the interior design of the school. So the one I'm going to show you is a little off in color palette, so I'm going to have you just bear with us. They couldn't recreate it in time in the right colors, but the palette of the blue, which is the most off, is really this palette, which is in front of you. And so that's what, I'd like you to look now at the one in front of you as I talk about what the colors and the design means. The logo was designed to capture the blue-green of the St. Croix River through the wave. The brown was added to incorporate the earth element. And additionally, the wave crests and the splashes with the bubbles bring out the playful nature of our students. The bubbles will also appear in glass blocks that we have around the story area in the media center, so that's captured in the school as well. The combination of water and earth represent Rivercrests and certainly the district's commitment to sustainability and preservation of the environment. The color palette that you see, the wave colors and so forth, that's really painted inside the building. You'll see that is very similar to that. And so those are the colors. We've taken the colors from the interior of the building.
Mary, any questions for Mary? I think it looks very nice.
We're very pleased with it and what it represents. We'll be putting that up on our website as soon as we have it in a format that we can place it there with a description so people will know what it represents.
Okay. Correct.
Moving on to EP Rock Fire Restoration.
Yep.
As you heard from Amy's letter to the board, the students moved back in on Monday. That means they missed five days of school. Almost everything is complete except the media center, and she talked about that being complete now, and it will be opening tomorrow, so that's another milestone in this restoration. The articles that have to be dry cleaned aren't back yet, so some of those things are still out. We have some things that need to be done in the boiler room, but we can hold off on those until December during winter break. So that's the best time to take, we have to turn off the electricity to do that, so it's a good time for us to finish that up. The storage containers that are outside the building are scheduled to be removed on Friday. The project estimate, and this is without some of the miscellaneous things that still have to be added in that would include some of the December work, there are some budgets, but they may not be true yet. So it is an estimate, but it's $1,339,000. Now, just to give you a reference point from the middle school fire, that restoration was 1.25 million. So it is more than the middle school, but not very significantly more than. I will be requesting a waiver from the DPI. I've been in contact with them. We have to ask for a waiver for those five days that were missed by students, and so that'll be the next step. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer those.
What kind of arrangements did we make of any for the students during those five days that they were missing?
Well, to help support our, particularly our working families, we had our school-age care was relocated to Willow River Elementary, and about 90 students took advantage of that during the week of what school was closed. And then the YMCA Camp St. Croix was very generous to offer their facility as well and offered us their full-day program for any other students who were not involved in the school-age care program. And we really appreciate them. That speaks to our partnership, and they just jumped right in and made that available to students and families.
Mary, I just wanted to ask, do we need to apply for a waiver for the full five days, actually, or are we just doing that as a matter of course, I guess?
No, we have to apply because of the five days.
No, I know, but I mean, five, do we need five days? I mean, I was just wondering.
Well, essentially, how this works is you have to have 180 days in your school year, and you can have 175 that include teacher-parent conferences and inclement weather days. So we are beyond the 175 or less than 175 at the present time.
Okay.
And so if we had a snow day, I'm assuming we would have to make it up even with a waiver.
Two questions. One, do we fully expect insurance to cover all the costs?
Pass that on to Tim.
With the exception of the deductible, yes, yeah. Per everything that's owned district owned.
What is our deductible?
Uh, I lose by a thousand.
Okay. And then second thing, I imagine there'll be a report on the, like, fire, like, how long did it burn before the alarm went off, I mean, things like that? Is there some detail still kind of on that?
We can tell you about that.
Yeah.
The alarm never went off.
Yeah.
In fact, the fire panel burned up.
Okay.
Which was in the boiler room.
Yeah.
So that was the reason it didn't go off.
Yeah.
We've replaced it with an upgrade of the panel. We are, we've talked about it, facilities and grounds, looking at upgrading all of our schools. We're looking into the potential of connecting them directly to the fire department.
Okay.
Really, in actuality, except for possibly Holton, that would only give us about a two-minute difference because when it's in a neighborhood and the alarm goes off, it goes off on the outside, and generally neighbors will call almost immediately when that happens. That's been our experience. But certainly we want to, it's a timed upgrade.
Yeah.
It wouldn't have made any difference for this particular fire. The cause, though, Brian, has not been determined, and it's not suspicious in any way. It was just they couldn't be sure what that cause was, and there are legal implications if they would identify what the cause was and it wasn't accurate, and they couldn't stand behind that.
But is it true that all of the flames were confined to the one room?
Yes.
And most, I mean, all the damage in the rest of the building was smoke and water?
Actually, it wasn't water, it was only smoke.
Smoke damage?
And I assume the cost was more than the middle school fire because of the location of the fire, because of the equipment that it damaged or destroyed? Is that the reason?
Yeah, we have some pretty substantial costs, and the electrical service goes in that room, and so there were some major components, electrical components, that were damaged in the fire that had to be replaced. That would be a large cost, and then, of course, the, just the cleanup itself was, would be the largest portion of the cost.
One of the advantages that you tend to have in a fire is you replace things that, you know, you're not sure that they really need to be replaced, but they're not sure if they would go out sooner, the warranty would not be effective any longer, and so we will have some new equipment that we wouldn't have had before as a result of this.
Okay, any other questions for Mary? Thank you, Mary. We'll move on to the reports. Peg is going to give us a report on the professional development, so I think I'll get out of the way here.
Here's a copy of the PowerPoint that I'm going to show you in, where are we getting this? It should be. Thank you for the opportunity tonight to talk to you about adult learning and its connection to student learning. Certainly, the research is compelling that quality adult learning yields results for students, and that's what we are doing in the Hudson School District, is trying to really do quality adult learning and make it systemic, K-12.
So as, as we're moving toward a culture of high expectations and a culture of high accountability, to partner with that, we have to have high support. And that's what I'm going to talk with you about tonight, is how do we support in, in a really deep fashion, quality adult learning experiences? And I'm just going to talk a little bit about a few foundation pieces. First, if you... First, if you think about the best practices that are researched, we know that they work. And then we take the classroom instruction. The link between those two is professional development, quality professional development. And that's really the link between the best practice and what occurs in the classroom. And we also know that instruction that's based on research, best practices equals improved student learning. And so what I'm going to talk with you about tonight has, each of the pieces that we're moving forward with our professional development plan has a research foundation to it and also a way to, that we can monitor it as well. So just, I did a presentation last spring, and I'm just going to get people up to date here, a little bit about quality professional development and what it looks like. I reminded you last year that when principals, we would approve, even up to at least maybe three or four years ago, we would approve on a regular basis individual teachers going to individual workshops. And it was a one-shot. You went to the workshop, you, you know, sat through the day and came back. Sometimes you implemented some of those pieces into your practice, and sometimes you didn't. And of course, what is, we're finding is, number one, it's very expensive. Each one of those workshops is up to, with the sub-cost, anywhere from $300 to $500 per individual teacher, and often that's for one day, and that's very expensive. So, and it doesn't yield the results that we want in terms of taking it back to the teacher, implementing it, and improving the learning of our students. And so we've moved away from that. And some, what does quality professional development look like? Well, first of all, we start with a student in mind by asking ourselves, what is it that we want students to know, understand, and be able to do? And what do adults need to know, understand, and be able to do to implement that for students? It's a search for best practices, and I'll talk a little bit about that later on. It looks like teachers collaborating during the school day as part of learning teams. They'll study assessment results. They'll study instructional strategies, best practices. Quality professional development looks like teachers jointly responsible for the success and failure of all the students. So we've moved away from these are my students, those are your students, to these collectively are our students. Staff view itself as a learning community with work time set aside during the school day and used for professional learning. As principals, we are striving constantly to create a schedule that allows this collaboration to happen. This is a challenge to do that. And finally, quality professional development is based on standards, not only the national staff development standards, but also obviously national standards and state standards. So those, that's a brief overview of what it looks like. So what are we going to accomplish this year? And that's what I'm here to tell you about tonight. First of all, one of the key pieces for me this year is to provide support for principals and teacher leaders when it comes to implementation of SMART goals. So I understand each building SMART goal. I seek ways to provide the professional development that assists those teachers in understanding what the practices are that are going to get us the results in our classroom. We will, beginning this June, conduct a retreat in June where we set the next year's goal. And we built it into our schedule that we will present to you each October and again each, I believe, August. August. And so what we'll do is we'll present in October, similar to what we did this year, what each building SMART goal is. We'll come back to you in August and present what our results were. And so you will, you will know how students have improved because of our SMART goal. So finally, or not finally, but in addition, we also, this year, are providing really high support for our elementary literacy through targeted sustained literacy instruction delivered in part by our literacy coaches. We also have our Writer's Workshop trainer, Steve Dunn, and this is a really exceptional model that he's delivering, this type of model that we want to replicate. What he does is he comes into our district, he teaches teachers, he works with teachers, he trains the coaches, he works with principals on what to look for in classrooms, works with coaches on how to drive the practice deeper, and he revisits, sets goals for teachers. They need to come back with samples of student work. It's a really, really effective implementation of staff development. And the coaching is as well. It is, coaching is really about the most in-depth professional development that you can get. Just because what, what coaches do is not only do they model for teachers, they, more importantly and more effectively, they watch teachers teach, and they provide feedback to them while not evaluating them, but providing authentic feedback on their practice. And that one-on-one contact between coach and teacher is really, really effective in terms of professional development. Also, part of my job is to assist principals in their ongoing professional learning. We've become learners, or excuse me, leaders for learning, and that's required a different shift. I talked with you about that last year as well. But it also takes high support. Principals need training in how to have in-depth coaching conversations with teachers, or what best practices are in literacy math assessment. That takes high support in order to provide principals with what they need to be able to assist their teachers and their schools. Also, this year, we've been experimenting with our school manager, in which Mrs. Hodges and I have served as coaches for our school managers. And I also am developing more that principal coaching model as well as part of what the goals are. One of the other things that we have done, and this was actually designed by our staff development committee, and we spent most of the year last year finding out, how could we support our new teachers? Teachers not only that were new to Hudson, but new to the profession in general. It's expensive to keep training teachers. And if we can support our teachers with a, the kind of professional development that really invests in them and invests in their practice, they're more likely to stay. And our model is based on, it's a model from California called the Santa Cruz Model for Teacher Induction. And it yields incredible results for beginning teachers. It also, what the results are showing from their studies is not only does it retain teachers, it also creates teacher leaders, which is really what we're looking to do. So we have a group right now of 14 trained mentors. They have, are going to be investing 55 hours this year in their training and in working one-on-one with teachers who are brand-new to the profession. So 55 hours they are working, like I said, with their own training. About 15 hours of that 55 hours is the actual training. The other 40 hours is working one-on-one with teachers. So they meet with them every other week. They engage in a professional conversation about practice. And then we also have a ongoing orientation program for our new teachers to Hudson, but that come with experience. And we have a lot of those teachers as well that came actually with experience. And finally, we have a three-year professional learning plan that supports our new teachers. And if you remember, think about the contract. We have those two additional contract days for probationary teachers, and that's where we use those days for professional learning to integrate all of our district-wide priorities. We train them on our district-wide priorities. So how are we going to measure these goals? First of all, the SMART goals will yield results in school improvement, and we talked, the principals talked with you about that last, in October. Also, the, one of the other measures is that our literacy coaching model will be more fully developed in how our literacy coaches can actually affect literacy at a, practice at a deeper level. I'm intending to get feedback from principals on my role in working with them. We should have a new principal coaching model, and we'll also have survey results on the new teacher induction program. So those are some of the measures. Now, this is the part that I'm, want to talk to you in particular about, just in terms of supporting. To really, I know it's the goal of this board to have a world-class education system. And, but that takes support from administrators for our teachers. It takes support from our school board to our system. Part of that comes from us being able to study from the best. So that means that we study from the best research. We study from the best practitioners. We study from the best schools. So we look for practitioners. We look for research. We look for schools that are yielding results. And that means that our work is supported by attending national conferences and going out and finding model schools that are doing the sort of work that we want to do here in Hudson. And we thank you for this, the support that you have given us. Just this summer, we attended, there was a group of administrators from the second, from middle school and from the high school, as well as Sandy and Mary and myself. We went to Lincolnshire and learned about the professional learning community model, which the high school is beginning to implement. They, those principals in talking with other principals who have worked on professional learning communities really was something that allowed them to be able to come back and implement components of that. So the, I guess the other way is just supporting our continual quest to find ways to collaborate during the school day. That's a challenge for us, and we know that in order for teachers to improve practice, they have to dialogue about the test results that they're getting. They have to dialogue about their students. They have to dialogue about their practices. And to do that requires time during the school day. So we are constantly on the search for that sort of, and need that sort of support from you. So I close with this quote that I like. "You've got to think about big things while you're doing small things so that all the small things go in the right direction." And one of the things that we did as an administrative team, I think it was actually the first year that Mary was here, at the end of the year, we had this great big arrow. And, or no, was that at the beginning of the year? I don't know. It's all mushing together. But, so, and we each put our own individual arrows of commitment on the big district arrow, of all going in the right direction. And that really is what we're trying to do with professional development, is just to create a system of support so that we can create that culture of, with high expectations and high results for our students. So I'm open for questions or comments.
Questions for Peg? Thanks, Peg.
Yes, I just have, you know, the only thing that always occurs to me, Peg, is I look a lot of times in the ramp, and there's just a mountain of educational research. So something that always occurs to me is, you know, how do we decide what is the best practice? Because you can find conflicting studies of any given two factors. So that must be really, I mean, it must be difficult. I don't know who, how do we do that? Who's involved in that? Is it, I mean, do we just kind of, do you and your staff get together, kind of get consensus on what's best practice?
Um, let's, how would I answer that? No, no, no. Well, I'm trying to think, even in terms of national conferences, how do you choose at a national conference that's going to, you know, so that we're spending our money wisely? And how do we, what you're asking too, is how do we make sure that we're investing in the kinds of things that are going to yield the results? And I guess it's, the sorts of things that we're investing in are, have proven results, such as Writer's Workshop. Sandy spent considerable time, actually knew about this particular gentleman who's teaching our students about Writer's Workshop, which Vicki talked to you about last year, made sure that they're, you know, contacted school districts about, you know, did they get results from this particular training implementation? So it's knowing what is working in the arena of education, and it's also talking to educators and networking with other educators about what they're finding.
Is there something of a time component to this? I guess what I mean is something that has, let's say, stood the test of time, as opposed to some newly discovered best practice? You know, I mean, I guess I'd feel a little more comfortable if we, you know, pursue something, make an investment in something that's sort of proven itself, that maybe has been demonstrated in various school districts over a number of years, as opposed to something that just blew out of the can?
Absolutely, absolutely. Right. The sorts of things that we're choosing are not whim sorts of things at all. In fact, I was going to mention, part of my Holton team's desire to go to New Zealand was based on their literacy model, which, you know, is, you know, probably at least 40 years old and proven results. So we do search for, you're absolutely right, not whim sorts of things. We just wouldn't invest money in that kind of professional development.
But in education too, there's just such a huge body of research that things have sort of bubbled up to the top, and there are people that you look for who are speaking at conferences, as well as things that you know have a good body of research that support the theory and the practice, so that when a method comes out of it, you have really good reason to believe that it will be successful, even if the method itself is in a new package. I would assume that's what you're also saying.
Absolutely, absolutely.
I have a question. How, I'm sorry, did you? No, okay. These teachers that are giving this additional 55 hours of mentoring time, are they receiving release time from classes, or are they using their prep time for that, or is it after school?
It's a combination, I would say. A lot of times, it's after school. In fact, I would say most times, it's after school, but it could be, it could be during a prep time, and then they prep for their own courses later. So it varies.
So really, they're giving us the time because they believe in it?
Absolutely. These are our best teachers who are mentoring. They really are. There was an application process and where they had to obtain recommendations from peers, and we had outstanding applicants to be mentors, and really tried to match the mentor with someone in a like-subject area or like-grade level.
And how many mentors are there, Peg?
14.
14.
One of the things we're also trying to do that gets a little at Mark's question is make connections with people who are very knowledgeable. And so at the state level, Peg is involved on the Wisconsin ASCD Professional Development Committee, Program Planning Committee. And that includes, that's probably one of the top organizations in the state, very knowledgeable. And she's able to connect with those individuals at various districts across the state and find out what they're doing, where they're going, who they're seeing, and what they're learning. We have, we will continue to work to get representatives on the State Superintendent's Task Force, where we end up being exposed to best practices in many different ways and from many different sources. So those kind of connections are a good investment for us to bring those back to the district and to pick and choose which one fit with the direction we're going and what's connected.
Great. Peg?
Just one comment. So Peg, thanks for doing that. So, you know, I think professional development is a must-have, right? And both for the results and also for probably teacher retention. And both for the results and also for probably teacher retention. Probably one of the major reasons that people stay in jobs is they feel like they're getting invested in. But as we're, as we're going through the process, this is going to cost dollars to, to really focus on professional development, to really take it from, yeah, go do a couple of, you know, workshops, to really, you know, build a program for it. It's going to take dollars. So I would just challenge the district, you know, the board and also the administrators, as we're going through this transformational process, is find dollars that we've been using every other year in the same way, that are nice to haves, and move them over into professional development. So I would challenge us, the district, instead of just adding more dollars into the budget to do professional development, is let's look for areas that we can reallocate our dollars and prioritize where we're spending our money. This seems like it's a must-have, so let's challenge ourselves and find a way to do it that way.
Okay. Good point.
Question. PEG, I, you know, strong supporter of this and really applied the work that the district's doing on it. I'm particularly interested in what we're calling measuring results, and on page four, the first bullet point says, "SMART goals yield results in school improvement." Right now, what I've heard, you know, from my understanding, is a lot of this is process, a lot of this is planning, preparation, it's supporting, which I'm all in favor of. I'm wondering, wondering if we have a baseline of understanding, of proficiency, with student, our students on average are in some kind of measurable manner, where students are in literacy, where students are in math, where students are in science, on some kind of measurable, quantitative measurement, that we can understand where we're at now. So that the end result of this, we can determine, the end result of this means that we'll move up that scale in each of those areas.
Well, and, and our SMART goals showed that. If you think about each of our targets that we showed, we specific, we, you know, specifically looked for improvement at each school.
No, but I think you hit a good point. We're in the process of developing our system with higher expectations. You know, in the past, we've used various measures, but we really are talking about higher expectations. Well, then, your measures change. And so we're creating, I know the middle school's creating common assessments in their content areas, and they're going to use those to be able to track student performance over time. And so we're developing a system.
That's what I'm interested in. I just want to make sure I understand that.
Yeah, I think it's an area that we're investing in, but, you know, any larger organization needs to have four or five kind of rallying points they're focused on, right? As large as our district, and we can measure ourselves against those, right? Easier said than done in education, but, you know.
I think I'm just confused because when it describes outcomes and results and things like that, I'm looking for something quantitative, not the process.
Okay, okay. And I, and I believe each of our SMART goals does have a quantitative.
Yeah, I think you're right. I'm sure you're right.
Yes.
But I think we could all use a refresher on those quantitative indicators, because I know, I feel like we've talked a lot about abstraction and not really seeing quantitative differences for a number of years. And I, and I think that we are, I mean, I'm not wanting to speak for my other board members, but I know I'm wanting to see some quantitative measures defined, you know, and begin to see some data collection. So I could use a refresher on what those measures are. And then I had a piggyback question, if you were done.
I'm done.
Okay. When you talk about measuring the outcomes, the first bullet point talks about the SMART goals, but after that, you talk about a number of feedback loops and surveys. Now, are these primarily, are you envisioning, how satisfied are you, or what's different because we've been doing this?
What's different, absolutely.
So we can expect some quantitative?
Right, absolutely.
Or some concrete qualitative?
Yeah. Perhaps what's changed or implemented deeper, or those sorts of.
And we'll see concrete examples in terms of qualitative indicators like that, rather than, yes, I believe that we're doing a better job of reading. They'll probe deeper.
Sure. That's definitely what the SMART goals are going to show you, absolutely. Now, we've got, we have that set up where we, and, and part of the delay is we don't get our results from, from, you know, part of our measure, even though we're really not using WKCE, it still is an indicator. We're looking more at common assessments in terms of, because that's really at the classroom level. And so part of that is data, is going to be data collection, will, again, like I said, meet in June. Generally, principals are not, you know, are, are on vacation in July, and that's why we agreed on August that we would come back with our results. June would be, A, way too difficult with the year ending. And, and we wouldn't have probably had our retreat by the time we meet with you. And July, they're not there, and so August. And then we could just come back again in October and present the new goal, based on that, based on our new data.
What I just want to point out is, we're in the development stage. And you've seen more data in the last couple of years than I believe previously. We've looked at districts who are benchmark districts for us. We have looked at how many students we have in the top end, as opposed to just proficient and advanced. We've looked at a number of different indicators. We have now set SMART goals in place and brought those out publicly. We'll bring those results back to you, but we're creating the system, and it takes multiple years to do that. So that's what, just another addition that PEG brought up, was that summer workshop for teens from each building to come together. So we will continue to develop that system, both the support for the system, but also the work of the system. You know, and our dilemma is, teachers who need to be involved in this work are in the classroom.
Right.
During the day, all day long, for five days generally. And so it's, it's very difficult to move too fast in this area, just because of the limitations that we do have.
Okay, thank you. And then, in terms of your timeframe, you'll be coming back to us with more data reports later in the school year?
I would think perhaps May, if that makes sense?
I don't, I don't know yet.
Okay, but.
Thanks.
Sometime.
We're data hungry here, you know?
I see that.
Great. Thank you, PEG.
You're welcome.
We'll move on to the pre-expulsion and expulsion item. Nancy, do you want to cover that for us?
You have a one-page summary in your board material. This report is, is meant to inform you, give you an overview of the, and a summary of the data related to our students during the school year 2006 or '07. Expellable misconduct and action on the administrative, administration's part and also yours. We do collect data, we have collected data over the past 12 years. So it's possible in this report to compare last year's data to averages over the past 12 years, so that we can see, we can make comparisons and we can see trends. And so I'll just, I'll just overview, we'll go through the report, and then I'll take any questions you might have. Last year, the administration did conduct 40 pre-expulsion conferences, which involved 38 different students. And we did refer to you 14 of those students, and you did decide to expel 11, or 29 percent. You can see from a comparison to the previous 12 years, that on the average, the administration conducted 16 pre-expulsion conferences per year, but at least on one occasion, did conduct up to 38. And the average number of students expelled per year over the past 12 years is seven. But during one year, several years ago, the adminis, the board did expel 18 students. Going on to the nature of the expellable offenses, last year, the majority, by far, of the offenses fell into the drug and alcohol categories, which is true over the past 12 years as well. There were five threatening or assaultive behaviors. There were three weapons, not firearms, and one shotgun. Over the previous years, those comparisons are pretty close. Very few threats and assaults. An average of two weapons, not firearms, and actually, over the past 12 years, not a shotgun or rifle. So, again, predominantly drugs and alcohol. The number of high school students were 32 at six middle, and that's comparable to the previous 12 years, where about 89 percent of the students committing expellable offenses were high school age students. Males outnumber females significantly, 76 percent to 24 percent. White versus non-white significantly. And students without disabilities, more typical than students with disabilities. And those, that, those comparisons hold generally true for the past 12 years. Specific other data for last year, there were three revocations of early reinstatements to school. In other words, the previous year, you expelled a student, or in this case, probably three of them, and you granted them with conditions, early reinstatement to school, but they failed in those reinstatements. So the administration was given authority by you to revoke those early reinstatements, and three of those occurred last year. Two students were seen twice by the administration. The second time, both of them were referred to you. Of the 11 that you expelled last year, five became eligible for return to school. And of these five, two have met graduation requirements and have graduated from high school. Two are presently attending regularly, and one has been, since been parentally placed in a treatment program. We do have six additional students that were expelled last year, who are not yet eligible to return. Three of those students are special education students, and they are attending an al, an alternative program that the district is required to provide. One has been placed by the court system in a juvenile facility. One, upon turning age 18, formally withdrew from school, and the other is home schooled. And it gives you a general snapshot there. As you know, students not referred to the board are often, or actually always provided some relevant requirements, in lieu of a referral to you. And, for example, assessment, treatment, restitution, apologies, community service, et cetera. Over the years, almost all of those students fulfill those requirements. It's extremely rare that they do not comply with the requirements that the administration provides. And in fact, last year, there were no students that the administration saw made other requirements of who did not fulfill those requirements. The conclusions from the data, then, from last year and just kind of looking at the past 12 years, our student population has grown significantly, and the incidents, actually the number of expellable misconduct has also increased. However, the number of students who commit potentially expellable offenses is very small. When you look at it from a percentage standpoint, it's about a percent, 1 percent of our students in middle and, and high school. We don't have, have not had a history of any elementary students expelled or considered for expulsion. So it's about 1 percent. And then over the years, we've seen a trend toward a smaller percentage of students being referred to the board for expulsion. There has been, over the years, a shift toward more restorative, more other requirements of the students, and, and we have found our students to be successful in meeting those requirements, short of being seen by the board for an expulsion. Drug and alcohol-related misconduct is still by far the number one expellable misconduct in this school district. We work awfully hard inside the school and, and in the community. There are some remarkable efforts as well. And it's not going down, not going up extremely, but it's, it's still very significant and of great concern. Threatening assaultive behavior is still a distant second, and weapons of any kind are very rare in the Hudson School District. The typical student who commits an expellable offense is a white male, of high school age, without a disability. However, over time, you can see a slight shift toward, there are more female students represented, there are more middle school students, and there are more non-white students involved in misconduct. Students with disabilities are disproportionately identified as committing expellable offenses, but not disproportionately represented among those that are ultimately expelled. And the administration does have the, the legal authority to temporarily remove students with disabilities who commit expellable offenses in the categories of drug and alcohol, weapons, or serious bodily harm to others. And this past year, the administration did implement five such removals, but, and all of them were for drug and alcohol offenses. And finally, repeat, offenders are not common. And I can tell you, over the years, in my experience with it, that's, of course, what we're looking for. We, we do not want these activities to continue, and, and they are very, very uncommon. Being expelled by the board, being seen by the administration, is almost always a, a kind of a life-changing experience for us students, and, and in some cases, for their parents. And it is a, it is a benefit. So that's a very brief overview and report, and I would take any questions.
Thanks, Nancy. Any, any questions for Nancy?
Yeah, a question. Nancy, just looking at that first bullet point, the three revocations of early reinstatements, that's something I always wondered about. I'm sure my fellow board members do, when we decide to, you know, offer this person opportunity to come back, completing some conditions, and, you know, how effective that is. So I guess my, my question is, three revocations, do we know, I'm assuming that these are from the previous year, generally speaking, that's the, the early reinstatement is for the following year. Three out of, out of how many were, were granted an early return? Do we, do we know that?
I do know that, but I don't know it now. I mean, I've got that data because I have the chart from the previous 12 years, so I could, could look that up for you and let you know.
That can be.
Yeah, I will let you know that.
Thank you.
It is not, I will say though, that it's, it's not frequent. And it usually occurs because one of the early reinstatements that you might make, and typically would make if it's an alcohol or drug offense, would be the, the random drug testing. And occasionally, when they're, they are, they come up on this computer-generated list, and they're called in, and they comply, and it turns out positive, then their early reinstatement is revoked. That is the most common reason by far. And it is not frequent. Three is not a lot.
Okay, you know, Nancy, I don't need to take up your time chasing out that. That's really, really all I'm looking for, is a sense that, you know, is it, because obviously, we all want, you know, we, we know these kids belong in school, we want to give them an opportunity to come back.
Yeah, yeah.
And so your sense is that it's really a very small minority that would get bounced a second time?
It is, and the administration would endorse that practice on your part. We would endorse the early reinstatement that you provide for most of our students.
Nancy, of the six that were not eligible to return to school, what was, what was, what kept them from being eligible to return?
It's the length of their expulsion.
So they didn't have reinstat- So, they didn't have early reinstatement conditions or?
In some cases, in some cases, it was the length of the expulsion. It just hasn't expired yet as of November 2007, you see. It could happen next month or next semester.
Oh, that they're re-
Where they're eligible just based on when you indicated they could return, and most of them with early reinstatement. And in some cases, they're still working on the early reinstatement provisions that you provided.
And what are the most difficult provisions for students to overcome to get back into school? What are the ones that provide the most?
Well, it takes time to identify and enter a treatment program, that would be one thing. And to complete that program.
Successfully.
And successfully is the key, because the school, you often require that they provide evidence to the administration that they completed a treatment program, and they completed it successfully. So, they have to bring that evidence back in, and sometimes, they enter treatment and it's not successful, so they try again.
So, by and large, these six are not unsuccessful. They're just in a different place with their success.
That's exactly right. Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Just a quick observation, I think I wanted to comment on that one about the shotgun and rifle. I think I know that situation. And was that not the student that was hunting?
I wouldn't comment too much about it.
Well, I think just for clarification, if you recall, there was a young lad that was hunting and...
Yeah.
And we really need to not identify it any further?
That's, I just wanted to.
And he probably did that not to alarm the community about that.
Okay. Thanks, Nancy, for the report. I think that's good data for us to review periodically and just see where we stand. Tim, do you have, I know we have the first quarter financials in our book. Do you, are you wanting to review that?
Sure. I'll just do a very, very quick review, starting on page 13, and I'll probably just speak to the expenses by, generally, general fund. We see we're up about 15% versus the other years around 12%. Reason for that is the closing, closed the first quarter of the year on the administrative service center, so that expense is included in the first quarter. Otherwise, those averages would be right down around the 12% range. And under debt service, probably more notably there also. Timing the payments causes that fluctuate up and down, but we had a payment on a short-term borrowing for River Crest in the first quarter. So, again, probably expenditure percentage jump. Other than that, there's some other data. Any questions?
A quick question on the, you know, with the budget impasse in Madison. Is that going to affect when we receive our payments? Is that throwing that cycle off at all?
No, the payment stream is still the same. It's just shifting what happened is the reallocation, really, when they talked about credit, giving that as a credit versus giving that as a paid revenue.
Okay. Any questions for Tim?
Comment, I'm going to state the obvious, but I'll just press ahead. So, not spending money is not a bad thing. So, I know that we're, we want to measure budget to actuals, right? I know we're trying to have a fiscally conservative budget, but I still think that if it's a dollar, you know, it's not bad not to spend that dollar and to be a little bit budgeted more than we need, so.
All those in favor? Okay. Thanks. Good point, Brian. Anything else for Tim or the financials? Okay. We'll move on to topics for action. If you recall, we included the youth options as item number four under the consent items. So, I'll entertain a motion for approval of the consent items, including the expenditures. Tom, do you have the total dollar amount in the?
Yeah, I have it right here. Move, like to move to approve the consent items and that the Director of Financial Services be authorized to pay bills in the amount of $2,918,379,053. Excuse me, I'll say that again.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion's approved. The next topic for actions is FYI evaluation recommendation under 9C. We do have a request to speak on this topic. Kurt Wees, do you want to? Well, we'd like to, we typically have you speak at this point on this, on this item that you requested to speak on.
I'll speak after you. I don't know what it, it depends on what you said.
Kurt, it's, that's the protocol. Do you wish to speak now, or do you wish to give up your opportunity?
So, you have to speak prior to the board speak?
It's, the item is up right now. You obviously want to speak to this topic.
Depends on what you said.
Okay.
It depends on what you said.
We'll, we'll, we'll take that as a declination to speak on this topic. It's either, Kurt, it's either now or never, so.
Why does it speak after I understand what being said?
That's, that's how we're doing it.
Okay. I think your rules are ridiculous. Can you put that down there? Put long-time credit to the school district down personally. Make sure you put that down.
Okay, you can speak to us.
I think that the rules are ridiculous. I think that a citizen should have the right to address the board after the board's discussed the topic.
You have to, Mr. Wees, you have the opportunity to speak on item 9C.
I am.
Okay, go ahead.
And I think the rules you have regarding the citizen's ability to speak to the board on a topic are wrong. I, I'll speak about freshman year initiative, but I would like to hear the, whatever Ms. Kovach has to say about it, because she may say something that I agree with, I might like to say that. But to have the citizens come up here and speak prior to the board even discussing it, it's absolutely wrong. You guys know it. I mean, you've derived these rules to shut the citizens out. So, I'll speak.
Excuse me, Kurt, you have the opportunity to speak on this topic. If you don't wish to speak on this topic, please sit down.
I'm still speaking.
Okay. Begin.
Okay. I just said, I think the rules are ridiculous. And having said that, I might like to speak after Ms. Kovach is done, because what I like to say is, I think freshman year initiative is wrong. I think the class was designed to take up space, which it does, is a needless class, which it is, and I think to have a high-priced administrator even spend the time to even evaluate a class like that is an insult to the taxpayers of the district.
Okay, thank you. Sandy, do you want to proceed to speak on that topic?
Yes, I just want to plug your.
Okay.
All right, little background first. Freshman year initiative, as you recall, was approved by the school board in January 2005 as a .25 requirement. At that same time, health was brought down to the eighth grade, and so then, students had overall really, they can have the every-other-day .25, needs every-other-day opposite PE for most students. So, it's an every-other-day class for a semester. We did have, I think, believe, four sections of FYI this summer, so many of our students do like that option of having it as a summer offering. You may recall, I was here last May with a report, having Cindy Holt tear up with some quantitative data last May. We had surveyed students, and we had had survey results, kind of doing a mid-year of the course and end of the year of the course. And I just want to remind you of some of those survey findings. We asked questions such as, do you feel this class has helped you make a more positive view of school? And we came out with about 68% saying that, yes, they, they all are some of the time viewed that as outcome of the course. The parts that I want to focus on tonight, besides that community piece, are the career planning and academic piece. And that is where we hit nearly 90% of students feeling that FYI helped them to improve their high school academic performance, and it helped them to understand the process of academic and career planning. And when I look at the course, the first year, for those kids who are currently juniors, and then what we really have starting to stress and strengthen is that career and academic portion of the course, pulling back a little bit more on some of the study skill pieces, but really strengthening that piece. Now, when you look, as we're talking like research-based, we do have the American School Counselor Association, and they have put out a new model of career counseling, or counseling in general, guidance counseling. And there are four components to that program. Guidance curriculum, individual student planning, responsive services, and system support. And in the area of individual student planning, when I've talked to some of our counselors here in the district, that is where they see FYI fit. Our counselors now have gone to two training sessions of this new model, one last spring and one this fall. And so, we're currently, like we've been talking tonight, building a system. And right now, we have our career guidance program being kind of brought forward and updated, and FYI is a part of that overall program. And it really deals with that one-on-one piece, especially when you're looking at goal-setting, career planning, four-year planning in the high school, doing interest inventories, helping, having kids really get on the computers with our WIZ careers, and looking at, based on your interests, what are some possible careers, exploring those careers more in-depth, what colleges or vocational schools would have programs in those interest areas, what are the requirements, so that kids start really setting those goals on, if this is an interest area of mine, what do I need to do in my four-year planning to make sure I can achieve that goal at the end of those four years? And that's what we're finding kids really value in the course, from that quantitative data last spring to the piece that we conducted this year, where it was more qualitative, with some interviews of students. And I went around to study halls and first asked students what math class they were in, because I wanted to get a good cross-section of students. So, I made sure I found a good section of students who in 10th grade were both in Algebra II, Geometry, and Algebra I. That was my question, tried to make sure I had a good cross-section. And then, pretty much asked the question of what they valued the most in the course, and in any areas of improvement that they would like to recommend to us. And again, overwhelmingly, that career and academic planning piece was mentioned over and over as the most valuable portion of the course. They really enjoyed that piece a lot, as far as finding it worthwhile in their four-year planning and thinking of that when they come to the high school. In talking to counselors, they really feel that it helps that transition, and we call it a transition class, when they physically go from the middle school to the high school. There's something about now, I'm at the high school, I have to put on a little different hat about being a high school student, and really start thinking about that, those four years as they roll forward. Some other areas that they mentioned, they also valued the portion that talked about life statistics, and I don't know if that phrase, if you understood what we were talking about, but they do another section that really gets into research that shows, how much sleep do adolescents need, how much sleep do adults need to be at their high-performance kind of piece. Some other reminders about alcohol and drug use, and that, how that can deter or influence academic performance. The other piece they get into a little bit, too, is just talking about the benefits of education. And so, when we're talking about those students who do go on post-secondary, what are the averages of income based on being able to complete a two-year program, a four-year program, go on and get a master's? So, the kids understand the value of education beyond what we're, what we're doing, making them think a little bit. So, what we are here tonight is recommending that we continue with our .25 requirement with a few modifications. You may recall, we did say last spring that when they initially brought the course to the school board, we had some goals that talked about attendance, GPA, but we already have such strong attendance and GPA, average GPAs in the district. So, we want to line up the course goals with what's truly important in the course, and that is, as you can see, to understand the process of academic and career planning, develop a sense of community in the high school, and to investigate the world of work in relation to knowledge of self, proof, rigor, relevancy, and relationship. The other pieces we're going to take care of, and I had a little bit, is just to really continue to strengthen this career development piece. I just mentioned that we talked about the benefits of education, why it's important to go beyond school, and we just actually talked about that last night at HSD, HSD 2025, that our students, we want all of our students prepared for college. But when you read that word "college" in the literature now, it means Botech, Vocational College, as well as the University College System. And it might mean they're not prepared. They may decide at the end of high school not to go on at that point, but that we have them prepared, so that two years out, they have the coursework they need to go on to a post-secondary option. We currently have our counselors come into the course and do an overview of what the requirements are in any University of Wisconsin system school. We have a counselor from WITC or an admissions staff person come and discuss the requirements of WITC. And then, we do get into the goal-setting. Goal-setting both with careers and setting their schedule with the four-year plan, but also some personal goals. While you're in school, what are some personal goals you want to have, especially academically? And get them into a mindset of how important goal-setting is. WIZ Careers is a software program, we, for a very reasonable license, that again allows us to have students go on and really investigate careers, find programs in colleges, universities that match up with those careers, and then tell you kind of what's needed in order to pursue that career. The 16 career clusters, Maria Derby, our career counselor, or career coordinator, has started now updating. There's some new career clusters that we also want to incorporate in the course, and there are 16. And one of the activities that they've recently brought into the course, and the clusters are things like agriculture, food, and natural resources, that's one category, manufacturing, human services, finance, health science, hospitality, and tourism. So, they go home, and then they talk to their parents about what cluster is your profession in, and then talk about how did they decide in that profession, where did they go to school, the programming, perhaps if they've changed jobs, why did they do that? But really get into discussing with their parents or other important people in their lives about how they chose careers and what they had to do to get there. They also have a career project, and then an important piece is the e-portfolio, and I went into that one a little more in-depth as well. The portfolios include a lot of the pieces we just mentioned. The students do complete a learning style portfolio, they have their goals, their career plans, some test scores. Are they involved in extracurricular activities? And a resume is one piece we want to add to that. But then, they put that in a portfolio, and then it's put in the counseling department, so when they meet with them as sophomores, juniors, seniors, they can access that information and guide those students beyond that piece. So, that becomes an important piece as well. So, again, we are here to recommend that we continue with the .25 requirement with some modifications, that we continue to strengthen that academic and career planning. And learning services will work directly with the staff to make sure that that happens. And then, the other piece, the administration at the high school and myself will continue to pursue is, the other kind of criticism is, by second semester, you know, most of the students already have kind of got into high school. Is there any way we can get more students into the requirement, either in summer or per semester? And we're going to pursue options. Can we have more offerings in the summer, get more students in that way, and/or fall? And our goal is that, you know, 100% of the students are either in the summer or fall semesters, so that we can meet that, meet that need at a higher level.
Okay. Thanks, Sandy. Do we have any questions for Sandy?
You wouldn't put students into a summer session who did not choose to be enrolled in the summer? You wouldn't mandate a student to attend a summer?
No. But right now, we have, like, this past summer, we easily filled four sections, and probably could have done more if we had had more options.
And I know students do look for things to take in the summertime.
Yeah, ninth graders are at that point. They don't quite have their license, they might not be at work yet, so they have, do have some time available in most instances.
You know, when you were talking about the point about relevancy, I couldn't help but think back about my high school years way back when, and sitting in all those classes and just thinking, how does this connect with, you know, careers and where I'm headed? And, you know, I think anything that we can do to, you know, help kids be successful early on and do some, you know, planning and sort of get them off on the right track in their, you know, high school career, I think that's, I think it's valuable.
I have a comment. Actually, so I think the objectives are good. I'm just wondering if there's another way of doing it. Could we do something that's online, right? A lot of the stuff, could we, could we task one of the teachers, the freshman teachers, to kind of, as part of, you know, early on in the, in the semester, that for the first five or 10 minutes out of the day, they make some of these connections? Could we incorporate more into our kind of curriculum versus having a class? And then offer some stuff online, so we don't have to have a separate class for it? I'm not taking away that it's important to do, I'm just wondering, there's another way that you could deliver it, that uses the time more effectively, doesn't require a separate kind of a whole structure, and some of the stuff can be done online. So I'm just...
We could look at an online, some of the parts during the day, I know the high school is looking at some models of advisor-advisee that might bring some time, but right now...
Because I don't want to minimize it, but I mean, I could go Google different careers, and, you know, I'm just saying, there's different ways, maybe different ways to implement and get the same objectives.
But one of the things that, before this was implemented, one of the big issues was that counselors had so many advisees and so little time with those advisees, that they, you know, they didn't, I mean, what, five minutes, you know, a term or a year, on average, with any, you know, given advisee? And so one of the benefits that you would lose of this course is that actual in-person contact with a guidance counselor. And that relationship extends not only to planning for courses and careers, but also to lots of other things, lots of other needs that students have when they're in the high school environment. You know, lots of other issues, not just their course selection.
I'm actually not discounting, I'm actually saying maybe we'll make more connections instead of having one FYI teacher, right?
But that FYI teacher is the student's assigned guidance counselor?
Not at all.
Oh, not anymore?
No, it was an FYI teacher, right?
I'll take that back.
Yeah, I'm saying, so I'm saying, instead of having one FYI teacher, have, you know, have 15 other teachers that, I don't know.
Okay, I guess I wasn't aware of that change. I know that when it was implemented...
It's a complete shift, and I just want to throw out there for...
Just a different model.
Yeah.
Okay. Can you talk real quickly about the four-year plan? Would that be comparable to an IEP?
No, your four-year plan is thinking about, all right, if I'm taking, if I want to get into the University of Madison and look at their requirements, what will I need to take my freshman, sophomore, junior, senior year to ensure that I have the coursework that I need to get into a university technical program?
Yeah. And it could be four-year college, it could be WITC, if that's something that they're...
Correct. And like we were saying at HSD last night, Mary was sharing, she's had some conversations with especially WITC, and we are doing a, probably a better job of making sure our students have the right course sequence if they are going off to a university college versus a vocational, because what they're forgetting now is the high level, especially of informational techs that's needed at that, for most of those vocational careers right now. And so we need to do a better job of making sure our students know what is needed in order to pursue some of those vocational careers as well.
There was a big workshop put on by Perkins today. Are you aware of what Perkins is?
Yes.
Perkins, for people who don't know, is a, it's a legal thing with a bunch of money attached to vocational programs, that it, it's like educational funding for vocational programs. And what it does is, the laws for the last three Perkins cycles, which are about four-year cycles, have required significant math, reading, and writing components in vocational programs in order for those programs to qualify for federal dollars for program development and delivery. And so the big push that the speaker was giving today to community technical colleges in Minnesota was really about the math, writing, and reading levels that students have to be able to function at in technical programs. So it just, you know, reinforces just exactly what you said, that we don't really pay attention to the needs for those skills to be high for students who are going on to technical fields, but they need just as much now. They need to be able to perform those at the college level, which is different from 20 years ago.
Yeah, from when we were making those decisions.
Right, very different.
Any other comments?
When you're surveying, you know, surveying students, at what grade level were you surveying the students in terms of their response to this program?
I focused on sophomores in the last few weeks, because they have been through the course. Otherwise, if I caught freshmen, some of them are just, you know, a few weeks into the course.
Yeah, yeah.
And the first class of seniors will be going, I mean, the first class of FYI students will be seniors next fall.
Next fall, yes.
So will you be planning to do some follow-up with them, too?
Yes, although that group, that group I would anticipate will look and sound a little different than the current freshmen and sophomores, just because of how we've beefed up that academic...
And I'm wondering, you know, if we're getting some pushback from freshmen, for example, if they don't really maybe appreciate or understand the value of what's happening until maybe at a later point in their development. So some of the reaction, like, coming from, I've got a freshman...
Just the unknown.
And I'm really, I'm really an advocate for this for a couple of reasons, the least of which is because European countries do this quite extensively. They actually do it from an assessment point, probably more than from a, what do you want to do point, you know? And so, and I think about, and I've now been in a career now for a period of time, and realizing, looking back, that 63% of the graduates of universities go into some completely unrelated field of their study.
Yes, yes.
What that means, the implications of that, from an employer's standpoint, that means training, retraining, hiring, rehiring, and the cost of that. Whether it's the right mousetrap or not, I don't know, but I think the focus is right. I think the intention is right.
And you're kind of right with the follow-up, I'm going to pass it on, because Deb Weiser, one of our counselors, was in the audience, and we just had that conversation of, you know, down the road, we may need to look at, like, your junior, early senior year, kind of doing another dipstick, and maybe that's kind of where maybe, like Brian said, maybe we can bring something into an existing course. But again, just kind of making sure, are you on track with your post-secondary plans?
Okay.
I think it's important for us to acknowledge that there are a lot of people in the community, parents and some students and some people who are not parents, who don't really understand the value of this course, or don't value it in the same way that the district does. And I think it's fair for us to acknowledge that that is true, and it doesn't hurt to have, to have data that helps us to show them the value of the course. And so I know that it's still pretty new, it's only been going on a couple of years, and it takes a lot of time to get it up and running into a place where we actually can do some of that assessment, but I think it's worthwhile for us to look for some.
And even the critics just cause us to keep looking at what it is we're doing and how can we continue to strengthen it.
Well, I think that's a fair request for us to justify the course, and so I'd like to see as much...
For reasons, I'm strongly suggesting that we maybe change the implementation, so that it's a job of teachers to be connected to their students, and what, who better to connect to a student than one of the teachers, than a kind of a third-party kind of FYI teacher?
Yeah, but I'd sure like my kid's math teacher to be connected to my kid in terms of math, rather than connected to all the students that they think are going to be, you know, math majors or math career types. So I guess I disagree with you in terms of that. I think that it's important for our teachers to connect in their subject areas with all their students, not just the ones that have career interests in their areas. And I fear that that would be an outcome of putting that on the teachers.
Okay.
And if I could just quickly, just a couple of comments, I'm sure that Sandy will remember that I was not one of those board members back in '05 that supported FYI, but you continue to give me reasons to support it. Last year, bringing forth some significant objective data, showing the strong support amongst parents and students, particularly as related to the academic and career planning, and now further this year, taking that data and revising the course and putting an emphasis on those areas that are viewed as strongest. So I will continue to support this program. I mean, I like what you're doing with it, I like the fact that we're looking at it hard and changing it, making it organic, if you will, and trying to meet the needs of our students. So, well done.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Do you have a motion?
This is a topic for action, so I'll need a motion for approval of the recommendation as Sandy has put forth for us.
I move that we approve the recommendation by Sandy Kovach, that we continue the FYI with the higher emphasis on goal-setting and career-planning that she suggested.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor, do we have a second?
I'll say.
Second by Mark. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
One, how many, one, two, three, four, five, yeses, one nay? Okay. We'll move on to the high school, middle school, Hudson Prairie complex, physical plant assessments. We do have a request by Kurt to speak to this topic. Kurt, do you wish to speak to this topic?
Yeah, the backwards, I won't speak.
Okay. Kurt has declined the opportunity to speak on this topic, so we'll move to Tim.
Okay. So we're ready for direction from the last board, fourth session. We discussed that to look at a study focusing on the high school and the middle school slash Hudson Prairie, treat it as one building, so we can have two sites. And to look at the buildings, assess the plant, the physical plant structure, and if you look on page 33, we have what we're basing the study on.
Can you speak up? I don't think that everybody in the house can hear. Can we do something with that?
We can move it over. No, it's this one. We could just pass this over.
Transition, transition.
Okay, so you can see on page 33, what we would base the study on, following assumptions, and what range of years we'd be looking at. And again, this is coming from an engineering firm that we did contact that specializes in reviewing physical plant structures. So, see down at the bottom, the fees for one building run 15,000 to 20,000. If you do two buildings, and that would be the high school, and the middle school Hudson Prairie would be treated as two buildings, would be 25,000 to 35,000. It does not include a structural review of the building, it's only the internal physical plant. So what we're looking for tonight is authorization to move forward and to retain the services of a consultant to conduct that physical plant assessment of the high school and the middle school slash Hudson Prairie.
Tim, with that, so with those three facilities, that would actually be two buildings?
Actually, it would be two buildings, right.
Okay. Any questions for Tim?
Just a comment that the facilities committee did take this up and is forwarding a recommendation to have the district receive or start the process to secure the site consulting firm. I think the main purpose, the main criteria for this is that we felt for a minimal investment, that if we go in and take a look at two of our largest facilities in terms of square footage, take a look at our HVAC primarily, and see if there are some cost savings that we might be able to achieve. You know, one of the main reasons right now is just for the cost of energy. So we thought that if we were to get a report back, or study back, that said that for return on investment, if we invested X number of dollars to improve our technology with our equipment, our state-of-the-art equipment for HVAC, again, primarily due to energy costs, and we had a recapture on a two, three, four-year rate of return, that that's something that we should be looking at. We thought this would be a first step to engage a consulting engineering firm with that expertise in HVAC. And again, I just want to emphasize that we think the driving force behind this is energy, and for a minimal investment, we can come back to the board, and the board can then begin to discuss, is it prudent to make investments in updating our equipment, replacing our equipment if there's a return on investment? Today, we really, we really don't know. And we may be wasting oil, we may be wasting natural gas. We think it's prudent at this point in time to be diligent about that and study how efficient we are or are not at the current time.
Any other questions coming? Mark?
I hope everybody at this table knows that I value the investments we make in our district, whether it be for professional development, bricks and mortar, i.e. the new school, technology. But I got to say, for these, I really do cringe when I see these high consultant fees. We're talking here about 35 grand, and for that, we get three guys that will spend one full day analyzing our physical plant. I got to tell you, I think, if I look on this list, first of all, I think half these things we can do ourselves. And I question the value of some of the other findings, keeping the building operational for 15 or 20 years. I mean, you know, you don't know when a boiler will go out, and when it goes out, we'll repair it, and probably with the best efficient one that we can find. Budget estimates going out five, 10, 15 years, I question the value of those. I think that Mr. Staceville and his staff has a very good handle about what's going on in this building, and I, even with regard to energy efficiency, I can't believe that some of that stuff we couldn't do ourselves, or certainly at far less cost. This is, you know, how familiar can it be that it's a full day? It'd take you that long just to walk through the building? This is too much money for too little, and I don't think we need it.
Is this different from, in the past, we've talked about, you know, looking at all of our buildings and looking at ways to, you know, improve energy efficiency, but that's just one piece of what they're doing. They're also basically looking at all the infrastructure, looking at the condition, and...
That's right, looking at capacities. You know, and it's, this was an estimate given by one firm, doesn't necessarily mean we're going with that firm. We will go out and ask for other proposals, so...
Yeah, I would dovetail onto that comment that, you know, we didn't know what it might cost, and so we asked Tim to go out and at least talk to one firm and see, you know, what it might cost, would it be 10,000 or 5,000? All you see in front of you is a range. We thought, at a minimum, go out and entertain proposals from at least three companies. And we're seeing, actually, and I'll submit for a motion here shortly, but $35,000 would be a maximum not to exceed, and obviously, if an engineering firm came back in with a lower cost and had the professional capability, then that would, you know, be the type of proposal that we would look at. But we've never talked about a firm fix $35,000. That was just the high end of this estimate that came back from one engineering firm that we talked to.
I mean, I understand that, Dick, but nonetheless, that's what we'd have to be approving here tonight, and...
Well, I think what the intent was to approve the financial director going out and soliciting proposals, and that at no time would we contract without coming back to the board. He really doesn't have much to go out and solicit a proposal on, because he really doesn't have a budget to do that right now.
Yeah, we'd be, you know, if, you know, we would make, we'd go out, solicit the proposals, come back to the board with the contract and the pricing, and the scope of work, again, for you to review and approve, if I'm approving.
This is a teacher's salary, you know, for one year, if you take that grant. For somebody looking, tell us when we may need to fix our boiler.
I think that, to be fair to the proposal, I think that it's, it probably is important to a long-term facilities management plan, to be able to have an idea of when certain things are coming up for repair. These are kind of, some can be pretty major. It's like you sort of need to know when your roof's coming for repair, when your windows are going to need to be replaced, when your, you know, when the clog on bobbler has to come, whatever the things are in your house, you have to do that with buildings, too, and we've got a very complicated set of sites. So in some ways, I really value knowing when some of these big expenditures are coming, you know, having some idea how we can plan for that for 10 to 15 years. And so I can see where this might be of some value. I question whether $35,000 is a decent, I mean, I just don't think, I think I'm agree with Mark, that's really a high amount of money to spend on... I think I'm agree with Mark, that's really a high amount of money to spend on somebody assessing that.
Other comments?
Right. So, Dick, just help me understand from the, so, so really the objective here, uh, so we can do some long-range planning on facilities, right? Do I understand the physical plant, right?
Well, that, that is part of it, yes. Yes.
And also the energy savings and things like that, you know, um, those are other things you mentioned. I'm, I'm just trying to make sure I completely understand.
Yeah. And understanding you're not approving any contract tonight. All you're really approving is for our financial director to go out and solicit proposals.
I'm, I'm actually, I'm okay with the idea of, of continuing to explore, you know, doing a physical assessment of our plant, um, but I'm, I'm just having a little trouble trying to tie any money to it right now, because, you know, um, so that's the challenge I have right now, Dick, with just a million dollars.
Yeah, and I, I understand that, and, you know, I think anytime that you make a study like this, um, you may find out that you're going, you're operating efficiently and things are going great, um, you're about as cost-effective as you can be, and gee, then you might say, did we really invest, you know, fifteen or twenty or thirty-five thousand dollars?
There's just a, is a way of getting this done, maybe, you know, in a way that we haven't yet thought about, you know, we've done, this is the first time we kind of, we've talked about we wanted to do a physical assessment, then we're seeing these dollars, and I'm like, whoa, I didn't realize that there was that dollar amount associated with it, so...
Well, you're buying in expertise. I mean, I'm not gonna, um, you know, I'm around building projects a lot, but I would never, ever, ever claim to be an energy efficient engineer, 'cause I'm simply not. But, uh, it's an expertise unto itself.
This board will ultimately have to prioritize what capital expenditures you make for buildings anyway, as they, I mean, some consultant telling us now that, well, you should replace this before this, and that before that. First of all, it's just a conjecture what happens. And ultimately, and I think we're capable of doing that. If, if Mr. Staceville's here, and, you know, we've gotta replace the boiler at Rock, we'll evaluate that and, and, you know, see where that fits in the budget and what, and what we can do. This is just a very poor crystal ball, and I think it's a lot of money.
Boilers and those types of things are major, you know, major dollar figures. It would kind of help in, in the long-range budgeting process, uh, if we can look at and make some assumptions along the way that we may have some of those expenditures.
Can we have a manufacturer come over and give us a, I mean, I...
Pick up the phone, right? We, you know, okay, this boiler's got a life of fifteen to twenty years. Let's go look and see how old it is. That will be just about as valid as this. I mean, you know, we know how long it's gonna, there's a, there's a wide range. You know, I know how long my furnace and water heater's gonna last in my house, I don't know when they'll go out, but I know approximately how long they're gonna last.
So, Dick, I like this in spirit, I don't wanna vote, I, can we do an up or down vote tonight, you know, um...
Well, I, I, I think this board should at least go to the next step, which is to entertain some proposals. If something goes back, let's say, and has Mark's, uh, you know, thousand-dollar investment or one hour walkthrough, you know, then it does put that in front of this board. I think we would be remiss not to at least entertain proposals.
I could support, I could support, um, going ahead and taking a look at what, um, what people would offer us and what they would charge us for that service. I'm with Brian and with Mark in terms of, um, I don't want a, I, I can't support, uh, what do you call them? You know, we vote on them, you know?
Contracts?
No.
I don't.
You know, uh...
Giving it a flutter.
If you say a thing, if you say a thing and we're gonna vote on it, and it has dollar amounts in it, I can't, I don't, I don't think I...
An action item, or is it...
Well, I, I think what we have here is...
Motion, thank you.
I think we have a proposal here to, you know, go forward in exploring this. I, I think, uh, Mr. Minnick and his committee have heard it loud and clear in terms of, you know, some of the concerns that Mark and I, in fact, have some concerns about the, the, the cost as well. I guess one thing that would be helpful to me is to actually look at some of the payback, you know, experience that some of these consultants have done for other, I think that might help justify any expense.
The, in the building we're talking about is primarily the high school, I assume, because that's, how old is that building? That's at least...
It depends on which part of the role.
Several.
Well, there's parts of that building that are thirty-five years old, I mean...
But, but I think the other, uh, thing that I think would be helpful to this board would be if we could see sort of a, some options, you know, um, maybe sort of a bare-bones option here, um, and then maybe on the other side of the spectrum, something a lot more elaborate, and sort of the pros and cons of each, each of those options. Would that, you know, um, potentially make it a little more palatable for...
Well, you know, as I said, it's kind of a two, one is the price, I think, is, is crazy, but I see so little, I see so little value here. I understand what you're saying, Dan, it's kind of, well, what if we can get this for significantly less? You know, would I buy a shoe that doesn't fit at half-price? I don't know. I mean, it's...
Well, we're not, we're not voting on, on this.
So, I, I appreciate what the Facilities Committee are doing, and, you know, you, so, what I don't wanna do is, is getting in the way of the work you're doing.
Well...
You know, and, but, I'm just saying, you need a motion right now to kind of further explore. I mean, why do we need to make a motion for you guys to continue to kind of further explore?
Well, I, I think, we, we brought it out to the Facilities Committee because we thought we needed to be, have, having dialogue with the rest of the board. You know, I, one thing I would remind the board, you know, we're managing over a million square feet, and that, that's a lot of square footage. And our biggest building is, is right here, and, you know, we're, we're dealing with the east wing that's very, very old, came on board in the seventies. I, I don't know how energy efficient that side of the building is, and as a counter to Mark's argument, I would just say that, you know, if we make, say, a twenty-five, even a thirty-five thousand dollar investment, and we are showing that we're gonna immediately save thirty-five thousand dollars by a small investment, we've paid for the one teacher that...
So I like that proposal, if someone comes in that says, um, and is, without even charges on anything, um, would say, hey, um, 'cause maybe they're, they're, uh, you know, they're, you know, that's their business, right? They consult, they, they show organizations how they can save money.
Exactly.
You add it, you get, you may spend some money upfront, but they kind of make a soft commitment or a hard commitment that, here's our track record in saving organizations like you this amount of money.
See, we don't even know that yet. We, we, you know, we haven't even gone out and talked to those firms. They're, they're out there.
So, I would like that, right, but, um, I'm just, you know, I'm, I'm just, I'm having issues with the financial...
Can you send it back to the Finance Committee for a little bit more investigation and talk about it again? Facilities, right? Facilities, not finance.
Sure, we sure can.
It's time.
Okay.
I mean, this isn't something that, you know, has to be done next week. I think this is, it, it's a process. It's, it's a journey to reach with identifiable cost savings through state-of-the-art or more efficient equipment, if that equipment is out there and, and we're dealing with outdated equipment. I don't know that. I don't know that.
This proposal, certainly investment in our facilities and maintaining those facilities has been very important to the board, and if you blend in the commitment that the board has made to sustainability, uh, evaluating our facilities for three different areas this proposal supports or talks about. One is energy efficiency, which is the sustainability aspect. Uh, the second is systems planning, which, uh, we have not had a multi-year plan in the district for, for facilities, which I think is something we need to move forward with, and we need information to support that plan. And then, thirdly, uh, we have talked about space for learning and the additional space. We need to know what kind of, um, additional space can these physical plants support. And that's really, um, the crux of this proposal. It has three different areas and three different focus that, that we're talking about. So I think that, um, with the facilities and grounds, we can move forward with exploring, uh, more information with, uh, various contractors about this and bringing it back to you.
Okay, good. So we won't take any...
We'll kick back on the Facilities Committee.
We won't take any, uh, this time, so, you feel it gives a good direction. Okay.
Mission accomplished. I mean, we wanted to have dialogue, that's why we brought it to the...
We got some.
Yeah, we did. That's good.
We'll move on to committee reports. Personnel Committee.
Yes, the, uh, thank you, Mr. President. Personnel Committee met last week, uh, entirely in closed session, discussing the private employment data of an employee and the bargaining of our labor contracts. All in closed session.
That's all you can say?
That's all I can say.
Okay.
They're trying to beat it out of me, good luck.
Facilities and grounds committee, yeah.
Well, I'll be real quick to the point. One of the items, obviously, that we discussed was the, uh, the assessment that we, we just talked about and was forwarded to you. Um, we did have an update on EP Rock, uh, that took a lengthy time of the facilities, but Mary summarized that. Uh, we had an update on Rivercrest Elementary, and, uh, and Mary updated the board on that as well. And I think the important thing to stress is that, um, we are on budget, we're on time, we don't have a lot of wiggle room. We've been very fortunate that we've had a good run of, uh, weather here in the last three to four weeks, after considerable amount of rain, uh, during September. But, um, you know, we continue to be on time. Um, if you get out on site, if you take a look at the quality of the construction, um, I, I think you'd be impressed. If you understand masonry and concrete work, uh, we've got some really good tradesmen out on the, on the site, so we're getting a good quality product delivered so far. Um, we looked, took a look at improvements or projects, uh, kind of in the upcoming year, um, all the way from the physical plan assessment to, uh, improvements out of the baseball field, uh, we talked about the soccer field, um, we're getting really, really positive comments and, and feedback, uh, from public that I've talked with and, uh, other members have talked on that field. Uh, there's bleachers going in, um, a substantial portion of those bleachers, the cost of them have been donated by, I think, the Soccer Association, so that I think the footings are in, and it looks like, I'm not sure what the schedule is on the, on the bleachers. Um, and then we had just some very preliminary discussion, you know, one of the things that we do not offer as a district is AP Biology, and, uh, I, I think that's a shame that we don't, and we don't because of a shortage of labs. So one of the things that we did ask, uh, staff to do was to go back and take a look at reconfiguring, reutilizing, uh, some space, uh, it looks like particularly over in the east wing, uh, or the west wing, I'm sorry, uh, where we might see our way fit to, um, have one or two biology labs so we can begin to offer AP Biology. I mean, it's just, uh, it's kind of sense.
Okay.
That was facilities. It was a long meeting, so I, I summarized very quickly, but, uh...
Okay, very good. Thanks, Dick.
Thank you.
Any questions for Dick? Okay. Um, we'll move on to citizens' requests to speak. And Kurt, you, um, have an item regarding one of the board members, and I guess I would, um, just like to say that, uh, I, if this is involving a personal attack at this meeting, I, you just have a board member's name.
Right.
Okay?
Right.
Go ahead.
Am I okay to speak, Dan?
You have the floor.
Well, it's, it's interesting that you say personal attack, because are you gonna be the one that judges that? That's fascinating. I think it's just, and I will continue to complain to each and every board member that citizens have to wait till the end of the meeting to speak. You, you rigged it a couple of years ago where this has been done, and you're, and you appreciate the fact that, that citizens have to wait now for two hours to speak to the board. I think that's wrong. I think each of you ought to be, uh, ashamed of that, that you make citizens wait for two hours to speak to you. That should be at the beginning.
Kurt, I think we know where you stand, stand on that topic.
It's my turn to speak. Go ahead. It's my turn to speak. Uh, I, I guess what I'm trying to figure out, I'm a little concerned about, uh, Mr. Holland's relationship with the YMCA and the fact that he sits on the Hudson School Board. Uh, I pulled some, some information off the YMCA, or the Hudson School District website, talks about a partnership with the YMCA. Mr. Holland is the Vice President of Financial Development for, for the YMCA of Greater St. Paul, and he's the head of the Hudson School District Finance Committee. I mean, he approved tonight expenditures totaling twenty-one thousand, six hundred and seventy-two dollars and twenty-five cents of payment to Camp St. Croix. Twenty-one thousand dollars, just tonight, Mr. Holland approved. I see that as a conflict of interest. I see that, that, I, I am concerned about this relationship with the YMCA and Mr. Holland sitting on the board of the Hudson School District as the Vice President of Financial Development. In nineteen ninety-eight, Mr. Holland, along with Tom Briscoe, one of the cohorts of the Y, led the campaign to buy the land that this Rivercrest sits on, was YMCA land. And he led that campaign. Uh, then in two thousand and six, just last year, he led the referendum, voted for the referendum to put a building there, a school building there, and now I'm understanding that we're leading fundraising to build a tunnel to connect Rivercrest with the YMCA. It's not that I have a problem with any, any of those issues, other than I did build no one that referenced it, by the way. I, I do have a problem with the fact that the Vice President of Financial Development for the YMCA is making those decisions on the Hudson School Board. Uh, what I would say is, uh, here's something I took off of the State of Wisconsin Ethics. This is on their website. It said, it talks about controlling conflicting interests. Says a local public official may not take, official, may not take official actions substance, substantially affecting a matter in which the official, the official's immediate family or associated organization has a substantial financial interest. And I think that Mr. Holland has substantial financial interest. Uh, just last, it was the last week or the week before, when EP Rock, um, had a fire, uh, there was, uh, many of the, of the parents utilized Camp St. Croix. Um, and I just don't, I see, I see a serious conflict of interest with Mr. Holland on the, on the Hudson School Board. With, with this partnership, with the money that we spend with the Y, I don't think it's healthy that Mr. Holland sits on the board. The other thing that it says as far as controlling conflicting, uh, conflicting interests is a local public official may not use, uh, office or position to produce substantial benefit for official, family, or associated organization. It's certainly a benefit to the YMCA to have that tunnel. It's, it's a benefit to have that school out there for the YMCA at Camp St. Croix. It was a benefit for the YMCA to, that the school district purchased that land. Um, these were all benefits, I know the land was purchased before Mr. Holland sat on the board, but he's now sitting on the board and making these decisions. And I guess as one citizen, I, I'm very concerned about that. Here's, pulled off the, this, the school district's website, we have the YMCA logo on the school district's website, we have a partnership with the YMCA. Uh, and it's not that I'm against the YMCA, I'm a charter member of the YMCA, okay? It says, since the Hudson School District and YMCA seek to expand, expand services, excuse me, I mean, that's a, as a combination, expanding services. I'm, I'm concerned about that, okay? And I would ask, as one citizen, I know I have twenty seconds left, Mary, I'm just concerned about my time, um, is that I would, I would ask that Mr. Holland can seriously consider stepping down from the board and finding a replacement. That's what I would suggest, because I think there's conflict of interest.
Okay, thank you. Um, it's my understanding that, you know, in situations where there has been a potential conflict that Tom has chosen to abstain on those votes, um, you know, I, I think as it relates to the new elementary school and its proximity to the Camp YMCA, I mean, it's, it's a logical thing for us to, you know, have some kind of a relationship or partnership with the Y. But, you know, certainly, um, you know, uh, we'll, I'm sure Mr. Holland will continue to be vigilant about, you know, activities on the board that could potentially be in conflict with, um, his work.
Yeah, yeah. I'll just comment too, if it's okay.
Go ahead.
It's not okay.
Well, I was gonna say, um, we could wait to that, or the agenda, because is there another speaker as well?
Okay. We do have one other, um, request to speak. Steve Hermsen, uh, regarding, uh, oversight of an employee. Steve, do you wanna, also, could you state your name and address? And I don't know if we did that with Kurt, um, but, I think we, oh, yeah.
Steve Hermsen, eight thirteen Harborview Road, Hudson. Uh, thanks, Dan, and board members. Uh, the question I'm bringing up tonight, I was going through the expense report, seeing the checks written out, and my question is this. If you had a salaried employee doing, um, that decided to do work for another firm, I, I mean, I've gotta say as a board member here, you, if you were as a salaried, salaried employee, went to do work for another firm of the job you do, uh, typically your employer would frown pretty heavy on that. And, uh, and yet I think what I just came across is, uh, what... And, and yet, I think what I just came across is what it would appear is, I found two checks that are related, or, I'm sorry, stated as for training to people outside of the district that are salaried employees for other districts. Now, I believe what, the hand that came out tonight was for the FYI meetings, and the people that, at least I recognize one name, was the Deb Hyderdahl, and she's the Director of Curriculum at New Richmond. And I'm going to assume that the Ron Berg is probably in a similar position someplace I surmise that maybe they got with Sandy and you guys had talked about that you had a little counseling session or whatever over FYI, but I don't believe it's right that our school district is paying salaried people from another school district that are on the taxpayer's roll to do work that, basically, it's just a consultation between a Director of Curriculum. It'd be no different than if Tim all of a sudden says, well, you know, I'd like to talk about something on finance, and I'm going to talk to my buddy at the other school district, and, you know, let's get together, let's have a little meeting, and I'll pay you 600 bucks to come on down. And you know what? When you get done with that, how about you invite me up to yours and you pay me 600 dollars? It's double dipping. I, I don't, I, I think the board needs to be aware of that, if they're not, and there should be some, there should be some oversight on that. To me, I just, it doesn't smell right. So that's the only, that's the only comment I've got. Thanks.
Thanks, Steve. Okay. I don't think there's any other requests, so we'll turn it back to Tom.
Yeah, I think I'll just respond to, to the, the concern about the conflict of interest. I'll start with my, with my intentions of personal integrity. I was asked to run for this board position, and I, after a great deal of thought, felt like I, felt like I should and could, and serve the district, and I would like to tell you all that this, my intention was to serve this district, not to serve the YMCA. I didn't come with an agenda, didn't have anything master planned in the back of my mind about having this association or this partnership between the school district and the YMCA. It happened to come along, I happened to be on the board. We had discussions with, about this with Mary, with Dan, how we proceed, how we go about this in the, in the most appropriate manner. I have abstained from some votes, and I will continue to serve this district. I think it's a little ridiculous to think that I should have to step down, however, if that seems to be the appropriate approach based on counsel from our attorneys, our legal services, I'd be happy to do that, too, because I'm, I'm here for this district, not for the YMCA, regardless of what others may think, so.
Okay. Thanks, Tom. And certainly, you, you've contributed greatly to this board, and certainly appreciate your, your efforts and your work.
I'd just like to point out that the citizens in our community elected Tom Holland, knowing full well he worked for the YMCA, and very strongly elected him. Being the superintendent, I can just speak to his contributions far extended beyond the board table. Tom and I have had conversations this week about things we could improve, things we could work on, bringing his expertise from his position at the YMCA that are very, that's very applicable for our school district. So I value Tom's contributions that I think are many, and we are very fortunate to have Tom on our board. I also think the partnership with Camp St. Croix is something that our school district and our community benefits from, and I think we saw that in response to the EP Rock fire. As soon as that occurred, and we had a conversation with Tom Krantz, the Director of Camp St. Croix, he was immediately switching gears in what, he was in a meeting all day and he stopped, they started to make arrangements for students, and they totally brought staff in, and I think that partnership really speaks to how much they serve our community and our students, and so I, I can't speak more about that partnership. I think there are many good things to come. We've just started in that area. I'd like to also address Steve Hermsen's concern about employees, and he wasn't pointing at employees of our district, but I do want to speak to that, about how that's often handled. I don't know these particular cases, so I can't speak to them, but sometimes in contracts, administrators are given a number of days to work at other districts. Sometimes that's not the case, and they may turn that check over to the district and sign it over to the district. We don't know how in this particular situation that he's identified how that's handled, but that is oftentimes part of their particular contract, or, once again, it can be turned over to the district. It's, but individual district practices.
Dan, I just, I want to make a comment in regard to Mr. Holland, and I've worked with Tom and found him to be extremely honest and ethical. I truly appreciate him being on the board, and it is about community service, and every one of us served for the, the great salary of $100 a month, so I'm delighted to have you on board, Tom, and I, I can speak to your personal integrity and your ethics. I, I would just comment that Mr. Weiss, I've been, seen him come in front of this board for at least five years, and he sure was grasping at straws tonight. Matter of fact, I think I saw him smirk a couple of times, and I want to note that he has since left the meeting, so I'm not sure what his agenda was tonight, but I've always compared Kurt to somebody that kind of comes in and rolls a grenade under the door, and what happens, happens, and then he quickly runs out the door, and that's about what happened tonight. So I apologize, quite frankly, as a member of this community, that you had to hear that tonight. You're an ethical member, an honest member, and a great, great member of the board, so I apologize that you had to hear that tonight.
Thank you, Dick. I think we all, I think we all can share those sentiments, and certainly we support Tom as a valued member of the board, so, thanks.
I just, you know, I'm just going to throw in my two cents as well. I'm glad that Dick made note of the fact that Mr. Weiss has, has left and doesn't bother to state his response or, and explanation, which is pretty much how he has generally conducted himself at these meetings. But as a, as a colleague of Mr. Holland on this board and a, and a member of the finance committee with him, he has always demonstrated the highest ethical standards. I have never felt once that he was acting as an advocate or proponent of anything associated with the YMCA. I find to look at any type of arrangement we've had with them with a very critical eye, and where he has needed to abstain, he has, and he has conducted himself in the, with the, the highest integrity, and so I sure hope like hell he stays right where he is.
Thanks. Thank you, Mark. I think that concludes our comment period. I'll now entertain a motion to go into closed session.
So, second?
Yeah, if you could state pursuant to, please.
I moved, moved to closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statutes 19.85, parent one, for the purpose of considering performance evaluation data of an employee and discussion of bargaining of the teacher's contract.
We'll have a roll call vote.
Holland, aye.
Kaiser Schi, aye.
Minnick, aye.
Turner, aye.
Bill, aye.
Motion is approved. Thank you, everyone.